Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us. Welcome to our Tuesday, December 5th, 2023 special Board of Education meeting. Before we begin, as always, please take a moment to take a look at your cell phones and place them on silent. And once you do that, please join me in presenting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, roll call. Let's get going. Mr. Hatfield.
President McFarland.
Here.
Vice President Roush.
Here.
Secretary Hatfield is present. Treasurer Lotterbach is not here at the moment. Member Ringo.
Here.
Member Horowitz. Member Blazer.
Here.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, item number two is request to address the board regarding the superintendent's search process only. If anybody wishes to address the board, please limit your comment to the subject matter at hand. Otherwise, kindly hold those thoughts until our next general meeting. Anybody wish to come on? Okay. We'll close the floor. Moving on to item number three, Board of Education matters, Superintendent's search planning. We have item 3.1, discussion regarding the search timeline, scheduled procedures, and postings. I believe that's going to be handled by Mr. Ritchie.
Yep.
Mike, floor is yours.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight. And we, I think we have a lot of things in place, so hopefully we're not going to spend a lot of time, but we can do things. So what we want to talk about tonight will be the actual posting that we reviewed last time. The main discussion for tonight will be a salary range, what is their range going to be? And then we'll talk about the advertising package. And I'll kind of walk you through, we revised the timeline a little bit. So I'll walk you through the timeline. I'll kind of explain why the advertising package staggered the way it staggered. And then we met this afternoon, I met with Brian and Sarah and Jeff. And we came up with about 20, 21 focus groups. And so we'll kind of go through that and see if we missed any, who else we should add to our list. That's kind of the plan, very informal, but let's start with the posting. And you should have a copy of the posting in front of you. I think we agreed last time that all the language is, is okay. It's just that we added everything we had to add. But I think the question was, what is that expected salary range? And Bill did a lot of work on getting some comparables, so thank you.
Yep.
The one thing with the comparable, some of those contracts were a little bit older. So we have to be careful to make sure it's apples to apples.
I think that's a really good point. Amount of turnover that we saw in the state for superintendent. You know, the data that we can poll, you can get every district in the state. But the data that you can poll, they will show the date range of the contract. So I think we have to be a little bit careful. Just if we see an outlier, sometimes it's because the contract started like pre-2021. If it's an outlier low, so. But, you know, in the agenda packet, we had state data, similar districts in size. So just ranged at 6,500 students to 8,500 students as one comparison set. Looked at other Saginaw Valley League schools, whether it was Saginaw, Bay City, Saginaw Township, Grand Blanc, LaPierre, Mal Pleasant, Traverse City. And then also the last comparison set was districts that we compare ourselves to in student test scores. Having spent a bit of time with the data, I guess just to start off the conversation and then obviously get other people's input is when you look at the comparison districts, so this would be schools like Rochester, Troy, Forest Hills, Birmingham Public, Northville, Gross Point, Bloomfield Hills, Okemos and East Grand Rapids. Those schools, the average salary was 200, about 202, 2019. But it ranged from 128 to 274. And then the median is 207. Again, we're at 194 right now from Mike's old contract. So kind of where my head initially went was, you know, do you pick like the median of the comparison group, which would be a slight increase from where we're at today, which may be, you know, a little bit higher than similar sized districts. But again, remember, there are some outliers in comparison district data. For example, like Gross Point at 128. You know, obviously, we don't know the reasons why, but there are some outliers in that data.
I've spent a lot of time going over all the numbers, poring through what we've been looking at, what we've been working on trying to produce to get this. And I would jump right out and say I'm totally comfortable if that range is 225 to 275. Or if we wanted to push it even further, then it's going to be 250 to 300. I am comfortable in that ballpark.
Are you saying for base salary or including?
Base salary, only. Insurance, annuity, pension, vacation, association dues, professional development, all to be negotiated.
I would, I'm not, certainly not opposed to that. I would advocate, depending on who applies, they may have different priorities. They want things for comp. They may have, they may be, you know, have fewer dependents and a health insurance package may be a different, you know, different look for them. So I would advocate going for an all-in number.
Okay.
And letting the applicant, you know, once we have a candidate, we've made an offer, let them say, oh, I'd like their, you know, two salaries. I put this for comp. You know, they may want higher association dues. So if you just budget for a comp end, I mean, none of these numbers. I don't think we should aim for the middle. I think we should aim high. And I'm not, I'm not going to be frivolous with money, but this is an important hire. And when you look at what the school board does, this is the one, if we have one job, this is it. We are going to see what's out there if we set a range in the 350, for the all-in salary benefits. I understand where that puts us in terms of the comp, but it does, it does. I don't have a problem.
I don't have a problem with that either. I just, I was giving that range just based on how the posting was worded. But if we need to change the posting, the way it's worded, that we are looking for a, we are offering a comp package in the range of $350,000.
Mike, is that something that you see?
Not, not very often. Normally, you see the base salary and then to be negotiated. It's hard to put a number on that total package not knowing who the candidate is going to be and what your insurance package is, what offer, in addition to insurance, are you going to include any vehicle allowance, TSA? So it's hard to do. But I look sheet, I look at, I'm looking at like, and maybe I'm reading the wrong numbers here, but I'm going to take, some of their like 460 for the total package. Like St. Joseph's is 461. Trying to find one comparable. Forest Hills, 385, 760.
I was looking somewhere in bold, and it told 375, which is the top.
Okay.
Similarly, the 6,500 to 8,500 student.
So if we're going to go to the, I don't disagree with you, but if that's not comp, this is not, that's not going to be received as well. Back to the 225 to 275, 250 to 300, something in that range.
I have a question, Phil, Rochester, total package.
That's a 15,000 child enrollment. They're twice our size.
I mean, Troy is 12,000, and that's a little bit lower.
But, and I guess, look at Rochester, I mean, the salary is 274 and the total package is 465. It's 200,000, it's $190,000 of other stuff.
Right.
I don't.
You don't know how they're counting that. Are they counting it as unusedation days as a buyback? You don't know unless you see the actual contract or read through everything. There could be payment in lieu of using sick days. So you don't know how they calculated that.
Yeah, if you pull up the actual contract for Rochester, it's base salary, 209, 741, with a $10,000 tax sheltered annuity and a 403B plan. And then they do have a merit pay for the superintendent's base salary. So to Mike's point, you got, you do have to go back and look at each of the contracts individually. Did they have a buyout for some reason in one year or something?
What is the best district in the state by rate of performance?
It, well, it would be.
So Frank, it would be now? It would be one of your league comparisons? I don't have that. Okay, yeah. But those are the best individuals.
So I had 225s where I'm aiming for a base, for a base salary, which was above all of the SBL districts, I think, as it should be. And still above the median, which I think Phil said was.
209.
207, 209. And we don't necessarily have to cap the, benefits can all be negotiated. I think we would put a cap on the total package. I think it gives us a little flexibility to talk stuff and let them kind of craft what they're looking for in terms of what it's going to take to come to NPS.
Yeah, I think one of the fact iteration is we've got a good district. Got a really nice community with some amazing support from our community members. We've got a lot of things going for us other than, anybody should want to come to this district. So I'm reluctant to just blow these numbers out of the water and not take them into consideration. And that's where I'm personally a little bit uncomfortable going to high 200s for salary. But I think being creative in some of that package, especially, you know, John, I think last, last week, you had mentioned something creative around compensation based on what we want to see in, you know, our struggling students or our, you know, certain students and improving their test scores. I'm more comfortable with adding that.
So merit-based?
Yeah, merit-based, merit-based incentive plan.
You still got to throw it out there that's going to get the attention of the candidate we want and.
Would 250 get the attention of it?
Yep, yep.
I mean, to me, 250 seems a bit outside of the bracket. If we consider that Rochester is kind of this outlier and theirs is 274. I think I'd be really comfortable like 225, 230-ish. 250 seems to cover some other numbers in the middle.
Highest base salary is 270. Rochester is 72.
Would it make sense to have the range be somewhere between 225 and 250?
How big a range, Mike, how big a range is?
That, anywhere between 20 to 50,000 is what I've seen. And the larger the salary, the base salary, the larger the range as well.
How about 225 to 270?
75.
Yeah.
And the higher you set the range, the higher, the higher the higher end is, that's what the person's going to try hard to achieve, is that high-end range.
Right, but not if we set it at 270 at the range. They're going to try to, try for 275 plus, you know. So if we set 250, then that gives us a little bit of.
If I understand what John is saying, if we want to, sure, Phil, we're going to offer something that's very attractive, highest in the state, we're going for a $250,000 salary. Set variable for your track.
Brian, is that sustainable?
Tough question to answer.
Putting out a spot there.
What if we cut it to super test? How do you like my sense of humor?
It's a tough thing to answer, Scott. And you're talking about one employee. And one employee's salary does not impact the overall financial stance of the district. You all know from listening to me every single budget hearing that you have too, that 85% of our expenses are salaries and benefits and it's compensation. You all know it would be a very healthy fund balance at the time being. But those of you that have been around economics at all, well, those tend down. But you've built yourself a very healthy debt to be able to make any sort of hard fiscal decisions over periods of years based on your financial situation that you have. Is that a, is enough non-insurements for you, sir?
About the best amount you ever get. Paper, scissors. I want to be careful with how I say this. There is no, Midland has bigger leader than me. But four of us grew up here, a fifth grew up in Bay City. We know what Midland is. We know how extraordinary the community is because we're up here. We, and we don't want the usual suspects. We want to attract somebody who's maybe never heard of Midland, Michigan, has no idea how extraordinary it is. And if we don't somehow set ourselves apart from the crowd in this surge, we're going to get the usual suspects. And I just, I, if it's 25 or any, an extra 25 or any, that's going to be money very well if we get, you know, the next greatest superintendent that has maybe never heard of Midland, Michigan. Maybe we buy down the best superintendent, you know.
Already here.
Swimming in the bottom all along, he knows. But I think it's worth stretching. And look, I can live with a lower salary as long as there's an openness to some kind of incentive comp to bump it up upon the structure based on performance or the financial performance, academic performance, whatever. But I think we need to do more than association dues, car allowance, salary. Work, you know, with things we've been talking about in our committee, we've got some big things coming. And we, we need a special here to help us.
So to your point, is there any reason we can't write that into the opening paragraph?
No. I don't think there is, I don't think there is a reason we could not do that. So yes, I think we could.
We would, we would need to. Because what they're going to see is that base salary. So if you are talking about incentive pay, there needs to be a sentence in there about above and beyond the negotiated will be some kind of merit or incentive pay. We'll have to word it so it's attractive.
So even if we're at 250, if we have a 10% merit bonus in there, that bumps them up to 275. And the remainder of the compensation package, which I've got to imagine would be fairly lucrative. Especially if we're talking about car allowances, association dues, travel expenses, et cetera, annuities, whatever.
Or even do 220, if 225 is more paler, 225 with up to 15%. You know, maybe if we make the incentive bigger, so there's an upside to help drive performance.
I like that.
Do we say in that sentence what factors it's based on?
I don't think so. I think that's getting too specific.
Metrics to be determined.
Yep, yep.
Any specific metrics, both of you.
And I think we also want to look at the strength of the weaknesses of whom we do decide to hire. And hopefully, we can draw their strengths out and incentives really compelling us forward.
And at the end, the person's hired, you know, we'll have that exit meeting. You get the dash six months for free. You could put it in there for measuring points and to make sure they succeed.
I don't even know if I would go with the percentage. I think that we should say that it will be incentivized by performance bonuses are part of this.
Yeah, if you tell them that the performance bonus of perhaps up to an additional 15% or, you know. That. Do the math thing if I hit certain targets.
Okay, so what's the window?
So are we okay with 225 with up to?
225 to 250.
250.
Base?
225 to 250. Is there a above 250%?
Yeah, I think.
We should fix that 225 then, as a base.
Well, do we need to put that in the posting? Or can we just say generous incentives and other benefits to be negotiated?
We would put the incentive in that sentence.
So we know what the incentives are right now?
What their potential.
What their potential.
Oh, okay. Potential max, you mean, got it.
I still think it should be the margin or the 225 to 250. I don't want to state.
225, 50, up to a percentage, be it 15 or 20%, based on the.
Okay, I will wordsmith. I'll use the 225 to 250, I'll smith the sentence sentences and then we'll get it back to you. And I guess I'll need one person to be able to, this looks good.
You can send it to me.
Okay, okay.
Since we're an established committee, should it go to the three of us just to look at or you want to?
No, that's fine. Can you copy that? That's fine, thanks.
Yep.
I don't know if there's a whole, I'm rereading this, Mike. I don't know that there's a whole lot of work. Isn't it just with a base salary range to be 225 to 250,000 with merit incentives of up to 20% and other benefits to be negotiated?
That sounds perfect. Thank you.
And we don't have to worry about.
I will still get you a clean copy so you can look through it one more time. And you're okay with the wording about the new superintendent will be required to live within the district boundaries?
Yep.
Yep.
Good, I think we have it.
Do we have to put a time, time period on that in the posting?
As far as.
Like by when they have to establish residence?
Oh, that's good, good. Yeah, that's a good question.
Do we put that in the posting or do we just address it with them or put it in their contract?
Usually it would go, it would go in their contract. Yep. Okay, any other questions in the posting? Okay, now I'm using the outline of the planning meeting. So before we get to the focus groups, I do want to say that your survey was opened on December 4th. And I had my, one of my office people emailed me yesterday, and I think you might have a record. So that is highly your community. I wrote the number down somewhere. So a day, not, less than a day, you had 409 completed surveys. That, that's a lot in one day. In a day. It's amazing. So credit, that's a huge credit to your community. As far as the focus group goes, you can see you have a list. That's a separate document that you have. So I'll just kind of read through it so everyone understands what we're talking about for focus groups. So the Sunday night, 7 o'clock one is going to be, and it really can be for anyone. But we listed parents, PTO, booster clubs, community members. That can be really anyone for that Sunday Zoom on January 7th. And then starting January 9th, I will be in the district on the 9th, 10th, and 11th. Serena will be in the district on the 10th and 11th, and I believe she's going to get here later on, on the 9th. So some of those were double booked. That's because it's here. So we'll each conduct the focus group. So we start out on the 9th after school, 3:45 with the elementary, I'm sorry, the secondary staff. At 4:30, the elementary staff. At 6:00 PM that night on the 9th, we have major business and foundation partners. And then we go the next day, we start off with bus drivers at 9:00 AM. And we try to get the time so they're coming back with their bus routes at that time. That's why we picked 9 o'clock. We're going to do four high school focus groups. We're going to do, and I see only have two on here, but there's actually two groups at each of the high schools. So.
They're on there.
Okay. Okay, yep. Right, so they're on there. Then we have other business chamber governmental representatives. That can be a whole wide range. We're going to get, you know, it's out and emails out to people. That's Wednesday, January 10th at noon, 4 o'clock with the union leadership. 4:30 with support staff. 5:15 with the ad council. It was 6 o'clock for parents, booster club, again, community. And at 6:00 PM on that same day, we're going to offer an all-staff Zoom and for anyone that's a person, focus groups. Then on the 11th, we got the other, the high schools. Again, on the 11th at noon, the rotary, noon rotary. And then Thursday, January 11th at 7 o'clock for again, parents. And then I still have three more to schedule, but they're all Zoom. So we will offer a Zoom support staff. And then we'll offer a Zoom nonprofit group. And then a Zoom with the higher as well. So the one question, what time would be a good time for support staff for Zoom? Keep in mind, their schedules are crazy because they're all different times of the day. So there's never a good time during the day to catch everyone. So if we did an evening one, would anyone participate? And then if we do, what time should that be? 7?
Yeah, up to 7:00 PM.
And my guess, seeing the survey results, we are going to have people participate. Okay, good. So any questions in the focus groups? Do we miss anyone? Can you think of anyone else you want, you would like to add?
Mark, do you know if that works for you? They have you pinned at Wednesday, June, or January 10th at 4 o'clock?
I didn't check my calendar.
All right.
I actually fly out the next day.
Okay. All right.
And if any of these groups say they won't work, we are flexible. We can certainly change the dates if we do.
Okay.
Okay, then we, go ahead.
We had talked, um, at the last meeting about retired staff. I'm just wondering where, because they don't necessarily fit with like parents, PTO booster, is there like just a general community open session? That would sit under.
We can add it to, I mean, the, because really the.
They're not business.
Some of them are gonna fall into support staff, right, where we have the retirees working in the building.
In the building, but not everybody, right? Like that wouldn't be like in, like in all community.
Do they have like an association or a group or a, a, a meeting?
Pretty connected.
Do they, oh, let's have Mark answer. Do they have a group?
Uh, yes, some are part of the MEA retired. So I can get information to them if you let me know. If there's a good time or a session that you want.
We can.
I can get that information to you really easily.
We can certainly meet with them. I would like to, actually.
Yeah.
Probably in person would be better.
Um, yeah, in fact, yeah, we can figure something out, even out in our office. They're retired here every month anyway.
And I'm, I'm assuming their times are flexible?
Yeah, in fact, they often do things in the morning.
Yeah.
So we, when we're here, the, um, those three days, we could, we could schedule a, a time within those three days.
Yeah, if you give me a date and a time.
Okay.
I can, or give it to them. They can give it to me. I can, I can forward that information to you.
And then Jen, to your point, you, you did mention a, um, like a general community slot.
Yeah.
I, I didn't see anything that really fits that, other than, I mean, parents, but, um, anybody who may not be a parent that has an, the school may wanna, wanna voice their opinion.
Yeah, we have.
I think should be given an opportunity.
Yeah. And I, I mean, all the other ones are, it's business or rotary or.
Maybe we can build a general community time slot.
Uh, in person or Zoom?
Taxpayers.
Uh, I don't know. That's a good question.
Tax, stakeholders.
Taxpayers.
Stakeholders.
Stakeholders.
I'm kind of wondering why we have noon rotary pulled out from other business chamber governmental. Like, could we take the noon rotary slot and put taxpayers, stakeholders in there?
I think that group is established enough, though, that that's worth giving them airspace.
And there'll be overlap.
Yeah.
There are a lot of business.
Business, they'll be.
Foundation.
Foundation.
There's clergy that go to that group. Yeah.
That's a good sense.
I guess, so that, that's my question. If we have these rotary folks covered in another group everywhere, why do we have noon rotary? If most of them are gonna be business, nonprofit.
Good point. They may not show up. Go twice.
And if we could free up that slot for somebody else.
We can just let Mike kind of coordinate with, with Brian right on. It sounds like we want to add a retiree one.
And then a stakeholder.
And then just add a general stakeholder, community input.
So back to the stakeholder question, is it better to be in person or Zoom? And in what time?
In person.
Okay.
Okay. Think that, does the time matter? Is that an evening one, probably?
I would say evening.
Yeah. I don't know if you could, Mike, I'll leave this up to you, but like slide it in at five on Thursday before the parents and PTO or something. Central auditorium on the eleventh.
Yeah, that works. Definitely. Okay, then we just got the retiree group scheduled. Good. Advertising package. So typically, well, first of all, you can see on page four that our website is a, a pretty robust advertising tool. And if you look at it recently, there's a lot more jobs on there now. Um, they're really starting to, um, open up. So our website and then the National Association of School Superintendent website, that comes within your base fee for HYA. We always have every state advertise within their local association. So the Michigan one goes out to a number of different associations across Michigan. Uh, you can see those are all listed there, so that, that's a given. And then, um, if you, I'll come back to the AASA, the big one. So if you talked about the diversity, uh, and, and, um, so we, probably ninety percent of the time, um, if, if anyone's talking about diversity, we, it's a hundred percent. We want to make sure we advertise in the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents, and then also the National Alliance of Black School Educators. Those are two very large organizations, um, which will draw some applicants. And you'll see the cost for that's five hundred and twenty dollars. And then you'll see where it's staggered in the timeline. One of the postings is six weeks and one is four weeks. We kind of strategically put those where we think people might apply. And then the last two neighboring state associations, it's hit and miss. So I'd say if you take the big AASA package, the big national package, you definitely do not need any other neighboring states. So the, the districts that take the neighboring states usually don't do the big AASA ad. So I think hearing what I heard earlier tonight with the salary conversation, who you want to try to draw for this job, I would definitely delete the neighboring states, and I would, I would certainly add on that national ed week, AASA. That is going to draw people as well. So discussion on any of the options that you have?
I think it makes sense to go with Mike's recommendation of the, the AASA, the AL, AS, and then the N A B S E.
So you guys are monitoring performance.
We do. Yep. So when you look at, I'm on page six of the outline. When you look at the, the timeline now, so we'll get this job posted over the next couple of days, and then you'll expect a phone call, expect an email from probably me. Um, and what we'll do is, um, actually, I think Serena's doing your interviews. So one of us will reach out to you where we're gonna try to schedule, and we'd like to have this done before the holidays, if possible. We need about twenty minutes, maybe thirty tops, but usually about twenty minutes with each board member to give you your individual interview. And that's how we kind of start the process, building that report. So watch for an email from either myself or Serena, and then we will, um, get those scheduled. And we, those are, we're very, very flexible. They could be phone call or Zoom, and we will do them early in the morning, anytime throughout the day, in the evening, Saturday, Sunday. We'll work around your schedule. So we just have to carve out that twenty, thirty minutes.
Mike, I, I see on here that the AASA National Conference is February fourteenth through February seventeenth, but our posting's only through the eighteenth. Is that correct? I wonder if we push it a couple of days so that it's advertised in the conference, folks come home and they have time to apply?
Yeah, um, you're, you're kind of a catch twenty-two. Because we've really prolonged your posting. We don't normally have them that long. But we know we're gonna be out at the AASA National Convention, so we want your job open during the convention. And so my thought is, people are going to see the posting well before that, but they're gonna come and talk to us specifically about the job. So I think we're gonna be okay, but we, we could maybe a couple more days. Uh, I would not go more than a few more days after that, because you're starting to get late now, and the later you go, it's gonna push everything else back. But we actually do a job fair out there, so, and, and we purposely make the posting pretty easy to apply. So if anyone is interested in the job, they can get all their materials submitted within a couple hours. And most of these people, if they're looking, they've got their resumes ready to go. It's just the letters of recommendation will, will take longer. Typically, a posting's about six weeks, sometimes eight. Six to eight weeks is norm, the norm. But you've got, and with your search, you've got holidays, and we want to hit that national convention. So you, if you are wondering why some of those postings are different times, like I said, some of them are thirty days, some of them are six weeks. I think the Michigan State one is actually ninety days. So we want to just make sure, we don't want to post it for the first thirty days and have it run out. And you certainly don't want to renew that national package. You know, it's very expensive. So we want to put that kind of towards the end of the search. So any questions on the timeline, the advertising packages?
Back page of the timeline. March twentieth, board conducts final interviews on HYA third-party background check. And then it says spring break, but then on the next line, it says superintendent's hiring approved and announced by the end of March. So how long does it take to do the third-party investigation? And I think we have a, a challenge right there.
So. So March, March twentieth, we have the final interviews, and that's when we start that back, once put up a third-party down another line, because you can't, we can't do the background check until you pick your finalist, uh, your, your lone finalist.
Okay.
So, um, that takes about seven days to get that back.
So that should work at that time.
So we, yeah, and we could, you know, it, it might be early April. I mean, if you want to be safe, you could say early April.
Is that seven business days to get it back, or seven days?
It just depends on how swamp they are. We've gotten back in three days and in, in ten days. But they verify all the college credits, all the license, so it does take, it takes normally seven days. So maybe we should, we should say.
Is there any issue with bumping that early April when we return?
Not at all.
Okay.
I mean, in a, in a public meeting on the twentieth, we're gonna say who the person is. I mean, like, that's, no? That's, oh, it's not.
That's, that's when we're, background check.
Yeah, we gotta do the.
So the twentieth, we narrow down to one person, then the background check takes place, and then in early April, to give us a week or so cushion, we'll make that announcement.
And now, the official announcement, right?
Yeah. But the community, to Jen's point, the community is gonna know who the finalist is.
Selection person is, um, on, on the board meeting. That's public on the twentieth.
I mean, you can't go into closed sessions for that.
And when the negotiations with the candidate occur.
So you correct the Michigan, the other states, it's not. So what you would normally do then is if you, sometimes you want to give it, that night, you might not be ready to make a decision. You might need more time to deliberate. So you, you may have to come back the next week, but if you, if you do make a decision that night and you, you agree, you would make some type of a motion where you're going to offer the position to this person pending contract negotiations and final background check. So now you've named your person, but he doesn't have, that, that, he or she does not have a contract, and there's no contract that's been approved until that background check comes back, you negotiate the contract, then you have at the next board meeting, then you approve the contract.
I'm sorry, Jen, I misunderstood what you said.
So when, when is your April board meeting?
One second.
Fifteenth.
April fifteenth?
Tax day, right?
Tax day, perfect. So I can just change it to, uh, A, April sixteenth? Will you give me flexibility?
That sounds a little better.
How's the, is the salary, uh, negotiated an open session, or how do you, how do you handle, or, sorry, the.
Almost everything in Michigan is open session.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a couple of things you could maybe do in closed session, but I would definitely consult your legal counsel.
Yep.
But almost everything is open session, even the interview process.
Yep.
So do we need another special meeting to do contract negotiation between the twentieth and the fifteenth to have a contract to vote on the fifteenth?
It, when you list the range, it really speeds up that, that contract negotiation. It does not take that long.
Okay.
And a lot of times what, what, um, a board will do is they'll say, um, the legal counsel and board president or a subcommittee are the negotiators, but then you bring it to the full board for approval.
The contract on the fifteenth.
Okay.
You don't have to if you just have.
Do you say?
Right.
Because every year you would get a recommended.
Yeah.
From the president, yeah.
Right, yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay, so just a couple of things that I have. Uh, one, we have a action item that's approving the posting. And then I think because we decided on an additional expense, thirty-nine twenty, do we need to motion to approve that additional advertising expense?
I think we can just do two motions really quickly.
Okay. All right, well, let's go through them then. Um, I will accept the motion to approve the superintendent vacancy posting.
I think we'd just be specific about the salary range that we're all voting on. John?
So make a move to approve our posting with a salary range of two hundred and twenty-five dollars to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with up to twenty percent incentive.
Good. I support that.
Motion by Mr. Hatfield, support by Mr. Waterbox. Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next up, um, I will accept the motion to approve the additional advertising expense in the amount of three thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars.
So we don't have to do the my staff one if we're doing the other stuff? The hundred dollar one?
You, no, you'll, you'll do that one.
Yeah.
You'll eliminate the Illinois one on there and the Wisconsin one on there.
Four thousand twenty, no, yes, that's correct.
Make a motion to approve the three additional advertising expenditures in the total of four thousand twenty dollars.
I'll support.
Motion by Ms. Roush, uh, support by Ms. Ringel. Any further discussion regarding the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, one motion adjourned. I will accept the motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Roush.
Second.
Support by Ms. Horowitz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned. Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome. Thank you.